To derail this kind of situation.
Yep. And the state of Montana has that. They have a water court out there. And that's, you know, some people that are familiar with the way they do things out there has said it works really well because all these judges all have the, they specialize in water law.
Right.
You know, just like our attorneys specializes in water law as well. You know, there's like a handful of attorneys in North Dakota that just, that's all they do is water law.
So evidently, when they, their lawyer sent something that triggered the judge to go in another direction, what it sounds to me like.
Yeah.
If they did have a lawyer, I would imagine.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Okay. Has he been involved in water issues too or not?
That I couldn't tell you. I had no idea. I don't know the man.
But you see where I'm going with this.
This is speculation on your part, but what are the odds of the Supreme Court agreeing to hear this case and how long of a timeframe?
They will hear it.
Oh, they will?
In North Dakota, the Supreme Court's the only appellate court and they hear everything.
Oh, they hear everything. Okay, but leading on to that, what kind of timeframe do you think?
Timeframe will be relatively quickly from what I understand. Yeah.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Six months?
I don't know that it'll be that long because, you know, we, you know, it's been, we're appealing it already. We'll have 30 days to respond, you know, with a brief to the Supreme Court. They will in turn, if I remember correctly, will have 30 days to respond to our brief and then within 10 days, we have to respond to whatever comments they do. And the attorney that was, that we were working with out of Bismarck has been involved in cases like this in the past, said that, you know, they responded in 10 days and they got a call from the Supreme Court a week later, hey, you know, are you ready to go?
Oh, wow.
You know, so it's relatively quickly.
Well, with, with water issues as they are, they don't want to have this, somebody get another case cooking and get something turned over. They want to get the bottom of this passed, is my guess.
Yeah. And one thing that in this, you know, obviously if we win this case on the Supreme Court side, even if we can't collect the money from the township, you know, that's a different part of it, they will expunge all of that record. It will be thrown out, is our understanding from what the attorney for Bismarck told us. Because they will correct those things and more than likely, like next legislative session, there will be some changes to the law that will be more specific with this as well. We, I actually have a meeting tomorrow with the association, the executive secretary or executive secretary tomorrow to go over some of this stuff and what changes need to be made. Because obviously, this isn't the first time in North Dakota this has happened, but.
Like Brian Reed said, this will set the game in a lot of places. It's going to open a big can of worms.
Yep. Yeah. Yep.
If you're done with that part of it, I have a question.
Okay.
Last month, you were in here and we talked about, I got a complaint from the drain out there, blah, blah, blah. So I was, I was down in that country Sunday and the pump's running. Nobody knows that the pump's running. I mean, can you drop a message to, that's Brian's district, to tell them that the pump's running? So if we do get a complaint, we can say, hey, call the water board. I mean, we, we talked about that last month and it didn't happen. How long has the pump been running now? And I seen it on Sunday. When did it start?
I'm not sure. I just, I just shut them down Monday again because we were just watching the sulfate levels and.
Okay.
And I was watching the sulfate levels crawl up and so.
I mean, lack of communication. It wouldn't have to happen last month when we had trouble. And I just, I haven't heard nothing now, but it's just a trickle through there because I seen it on the Chasler Road. But, I mean, you could just have dropped the text or something to somebody and said you turned on the pumps. It would be simple.
I didn't know I had to notify anybody. I mean, I was just neither.
Wow. That was what we were talking about last month, basically. So that's just my little, not a big, I don't think it's that much to ask.
So people called you and complained?
Not this time. Last time this happened. Larry knows.
What I don't understand is why do these people gotta keep complaining about it? It's a project that we have to manage.
I don't, nobody complained this time.
You know?
Nobody complained.
So I got a question. You've got a lot of culverts in these assessed drains up here that are gated. Does somebody notify you when those gates are open or closed? That'd be the same thing.
Yeah.
They don't, but I mean.
Well, everybody's concerned because of sulfate level. I'm not saying that's the game here, but that's what.
Thing is, the sulfate levels in the games are higher than what we're pumping. That's it.
Yeah, because all the fresh water went in there.
You know, but it's, it's a political thing.
I know, but I mean, it's just, whatever. That's fine.
You guys do realize that the state runs that, right? The state keeps track of that. We turn it on, the state gets after us to shut it off. And you tell these people that because I am getting fed up with it. Yes, that is the biggest thorn in our side. No, you asked a question. I'm telling you.
Now you're getting wild about it.
I ain't getting wild yet.
Settle, settle down.
Who would be responsible for opening and closing a gate? Is it the water?
We have a gate man that takes care of all the assessed drain gates.
Okay, so you would give him an order to either open or close a gate? Because if it's open and it's not supposed to be, that's where you guys?
He follows an operations plan.
Okay.
And we do the same thing with Hurst Field. You know, and these, these assessed drains, the gates have been operating for what, 35, 40 years? You know, nobody's reported to anybody, you know, when they open and close them, you know. Obviously, you know, they follow the plan. Hurst Field's got a plan. We pump water when the sulfate levels are, you know, drop and then when they go back up. Brian manages all that right now. And he watches, we've got, the information is sent to a website that we go back and we look at. Okay, where are we at today with the EC levels? You know, is it okay? So I started the pumps about on the 21st because our conductivity was low enough that we could, that we could pump water. Well.
That's after the rain, after that four-inch rain.
Yeah. And then so after about a week or 10 days, they ran. Well, I watched the conductivity rates and they started coming up. So then I shut them down to 1,200 gallons a minute, set a 2,100. And then I watched them again and they were, they were getting up there. So Monday, I shut them off.
Well, that's good. I mean, it's.
But I don't know what's the purpose of notifying somebody. I mean.
You know, if you get complaints, just tell them, call the water board.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't get any this time, but I just, that's why I brought this up.
Yeah. It just, you know, you gotta realize, Boone, is this isn't our full-time job.
No, I understand that.
And we're all busy, especially this time of the year.
I know.
It just, it gets to be so doggone petty with all this crap.
I know.
You know, it just, these people, they voted for that doggone drain down there. And obviously, the ones that didn't vote for it are the ones that are pissed off and they're complaining about it.
And here's, here's the other thing. You talk about the issue sulfate levels. When they have to shut the pump down because the sulfate levels are too high, those standards are much more strict than anybody's cattle water hole has raked in, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's beyond.
It's a political thing. That little bit of water that trickles out of there, that's all this is.
And that's the cleanest water that's in that system. Even when you have to shut it down.
Yeah.
Some people will never understand that. So when you get complaints, sometimes you just gotta ignore them or pass it on to this, right?
That's all I wanted. I mean, I get it a little more explained every time. Okay.
Well, anyway, one of the other concerning issues that we have is, I get a call from a guy and saying, oh, I heard you, your lawsuit got denied, overruled. It's like, yeah, okay. And anyway, he says to me, he said, but the describing part of this is, is how I learned about it. And I says, well, what do you mean? Well, he says, a guy came to me and said, hey, Brian Love called me up and told me that, you know, the water board got, got denied or, you know, ruled against on their, on their lawsuit.
Can I not do that?
Well, and what he said was, because I called this individual and he said it was just like you were excited about it that we got overruled.
I was concerned for him.
Concerned for who?
The person I called.
Uh, he didn't call you. You called him.
I know I did. That's what I said. I was concerned that he knew that. Is it, I mean, do you want to monitor my phone calls? Do you want to monitor the people that call and ask me things? Is that what you guys want to do? I have a district that I'm concerned about the people that are in it. I'm sorry you feel that I'm doing wrong.
Well, Brian, we'll back up. Four years ago, we had a meeting with Department of Environmental Quality. Rooms full of people.
Yeah.
Okay. We go through and it was all over this Hurst Field sulfate level, levels. Okay? This guy gets done explaining and I asked the county commissioners at the time, you know, which some of you guys are new, if you had any questions. You proceeded to criticize the job that we do. Telling us that, you know, we're not worth what we're getting paid because we don't do a good job. And back then, we responded to you at the next meeting with a formal complaint letter and we talked about this. And you told us at that particular meeting that you would come to our meeting, you learned what's going on.
I've been wanting to come, but it has not worked. I'm sorry.
In four years, it hasn't, it hasn't worked?
I didn't. Like I told you before, I actually didn't think I was welcome. I'm going to stick to that. Now, this spring or this January, I said I was going to come and I will come. But I haven't had the opportunity yet because every time I should come, there's something that came up. I'm sorry it has and I will come to your meeting.
Okay. I, I, one thing that I struggle with is, okay, why does it seem like anything that happens with the water board, it's like you're against us? Why?
Well, I'll tell you. You told me before that you answer your phone. In the past, you haven't because I've had a lot of people call me.
That is not true.
And tell me they called you and you wouldn't call back and you, and you wouldn't answer your phone. What am I supposed to do with that? You tell me.
Well.
If you want me to give you names, I will outside this meeting.
Okay. I appreciate that. Because to my knowledge, unless I never got a voicemail, I call everybody back. Just like I got a call about a ruling that we just did lightly. And of course, we're out farming, busy. Four times, I called this guy back and he finally, he returned my call. And we had the conversation this morning when I was on my way into town. I make attempts to do that. So I find it, unless I didn't get a voicemail, I find it really hard to believe that I didn't answer my phone and I didn't call back.
No. I've heard that comment more than once and I didn't want to bring it up. But I've heard that comment more than once.
You need to.
We gotta move on here, you guys. We're repeating ourselves here.
You guys got anything?
Get done.
But that's what we have. That's what expands today.
That's fine.
But anyway.
We gotta work with it and it's going to be where it's going to be.
Yeah.
Hope for the best.
Yep.
Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Brian and Devin.
Brian, you can bring us off coffee next time.
All right.
I have one more thing about roads that I didn't bring up. If you have two minutes.
Well, we're.
Give it to us.
Well, you guys are aware that the Bismarck Lagoon project went through, correct? Okay. So the townships have agreed to haul road agreements and I've met with the, with RTS and they, they're gonna, they're building a road in a township to bring this clay in from the south of town. And they're going to use approximately one mile of Wells County pavement, Old 52, from the junction of 52. I've talked to Dennis about this. So we're not going to be hauling 105, 5,000 or anything like that, but they will be hauling a little heavy. And I, I think, you know, what we're talking with Dennis is, is we understand that, you know, there's 8,000 loads of clay that got to come in. So we will be doing, we'll do a haul road agreement for that mile of that pavement. Okay? That project will probably be starting here in a week and it's going to run all the way to the end of October. And there, there's a very distinct possibility that it will not be completed by the end of the year. Just because 140,000 yards of clay. And I was told last week that they're going to be hauling with up to six trucks.
It's going to take a long time.
Yeah. You know, I mean, just to give you guys an idea, 20 yards a truck, probably 85,000 pounds or whatever, 20 yards a truck, six trucks, that's 120 yards if they make, say they make 10 trips a day. That's 1,020 yards and they have 140,000 yards to bring in. That's 120 days of trucking.
How many miles are they trucking it?
About 11.
About 11. They're actually building, they're building a mile and a half of a gravel road that's a prairie rail, prairie trail right now. And not, it's a section line, but a non-maintained section line. They're going to be building a mile and a half of gravel road so they can come straight out to 52. And that, that way, they're not hauling on what Wells County Cottonwood Road, we call it.
Right, right.
Yeah, they're not going to be hauling on that.
Come from 4,000.
Yeah. Way up, which saves us 7,000 trucks on one of our gravel roads, you know. So they've met with the townships and they've, in the townships, I've been out there, they've signed their haul road agreements and we'll sign a haul, haul review. I've already signed it. We'll, we'll inspect the road. There will be damage to Old 52, but Old 52 is so bad, I mean, you know, it is what it is, but at least it's one mile of our county pavement and not 13 miles where the, if the clay was coming from the west, obviously, they wouldn't be hauling down Old 52. Just to make you aware. That's it.
We are going to talk about this next. Hamburg Road, it's ruined up there. The project bid consideration.
Yep.
We have to make a motion and accept that, right?
Well, yeah, it would be, it would be nice, yes.
So.
Oh, you don't have to accept it.
You don't have to accept it. You have to, you have to address whether you accept or deny.
Is there a motion for the?
Oh, here they are. We received just the two bids from Knife River and Central Specialties. Knife River's bid was 791,046 dollars and 78 cents. And Central Specialties' bid was 902,437 dollars and 25 cents. Both bids met all of the specifications, but there is give or take about $10,000 difference between, or 110,000 difference between them.
And the engineer's estimate was 775,000.
Right.
Yep.
I remember that.
Is there a completion date on that bid?
I thought we had one in there, but I don't remember.
I can't remember, but I do believe it's October 31st.
Okay.
It's in October.
Which company was the 791, Knife River? What was the other one?
902.
Which one's usually doing the work, getting the county Knife River?
Well, I, you know, we, after the, after the bid letting was done, you know, one, okay, so we looked at the bids and I assumed that one of the reasons Knife River's bid was lower was, is they're already working on projects around us.
They got.
Their mobilization fees were, were less.
Or plant.
Yep. They were less. So in, between mobilization and stuff, it was about half the bid. So both companies have done projects with Wells County, Central Specialties and Knife River. And I think we were happy with, you know, both companies. So I, I have no concern over the two bidding companies if that was your question.
Where is the completion date? Is that October 25th?
25th, okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept Knife River's bid. I mean, justification for that is 100 some thousand cheaper than the other one. Secondly, I'm making a motion to accept it because it has come in close to the engineer's estimate. So that's my reason for that.
Is there a second on that?
Second?
Second by Brian Miller? Is there any more discussion?
That does, that doesn't include the.
Correct.
Right. So that's another 100, but.
Probably above 10%.
Yeah, 6%.
Six. Is it six or 10?
Well, that's what the, that's what the engineering estimate was. Or when you gave the estimate of the, it was written in the corner, right? 6%?
Yeah.
It goes all the way to 900,000, so.
Okay. Well, it should be 840. 6% of 791.
79,000 on top of that. So that gets you up to what, 870, 875? So, okay.
Any more discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. The Knife River will advocate. The next thing on the agenda is the Lawrence Welk anniversary tribute.
They should not be too controversial at all.
I don't know what it is all about.
Did you read your email?
Coming up is the 70th anniversary of this and it's just, it's one of those things that we just don't have a lot of native North Dakotans who do this. And it would be the 70th anniversary of the creation of the Lawrence Welk Show for Television, which used to be back in the day when you had, you're lucky, maybe you had two channels. So that was just a regular Sunday night feature, certainly in my house and, and many others as well. That continued to run for more than a quarter of a century. And it's just an opportunity to honor the accomplishments of Lawrence Welk as well as his sidekick, Byron Florn, who is from small-town South Dakota. Actually, I think he was probably not born in a hospital, but around the Webster, South Dakota area. And it's just an opportunity, I think, for our commission to honor a native North Dakotan on the 2nd of July, the 70th anniversary of the creation of a Lawrence Welk Show. So. And I would like, if you're, if you so choose to recognize July 7, 2nd as a tribute to Lawrence Welk's legacy, please. And then we'll send a letter off on your behalf if that's what you choose.
So we ought to make a motion to do that.
Yep.
Lawrence Welk anniversary tribute.
Yep.
I accept the motion.
So what does that mean? They were to recognize July 2nd? Is that a holiday?
No.
No.
Just a.
Unnicety gesture.
Brian Miller made a motion. Anybody second, or anybody second it?
What was his motion?
That he.
Recognize.
Recognize Lawrence Welk anniversary.
Thank you. I'll second it.
Brian Love seconds it? Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I July 2nd off?
No, I'm just.
That's what it's for.
That old boy.
I would guess there'll be a lot of music on the radio though.
Yeah.
Like polka party on Sunday mornings.
Legislature wrap-up this is. I don't know what it's about.
All right. You got a handout there. I'm going to go through a handful of things.
Right here.
I am not going to touch on every scene. So, and the pages are not numbered, so you gotta stay with me. So if we go to, it's about two or three pages in where it says property taxes in the upper left-hand, or on the top. And that has a model house in the lower left-hand. That's where I'm going to start. A lot of this is not new to either the commission or the folks in attendance, but just a couple of highlights here. Primary residence credits at $1,600, which is triple, more than triple of what it was this past year. The reform portion of this, obviously, and it says state buy down the school mills. That's been going on for years. So in the same capacity, and we'll talk about this in an item a little bit later, they'll continue to fund social services, which is also a buy-down, if you will, of local mills. They bought that down to zero. The reform portion is a 3% growth caps. And I will tell you that this is, for all intensive purposes, it's going to be easy at the beginning. It's going to get progressively more and more difficult for rural areas like West County. Not going to be difficult for Cass County because as West Park continues to grow and Park continues to sell. Now, what is needed is that evaluation. Do you think that's happening? Do you think that's going to be happening? So, since the vast majority of legislators come from those areas, 3%, yeah, they could probably live with that. And we'll be able to at the beginning. But mark my words, this will become progressively more and more difficult as time goes on for a small rural area like this. CPI, which is something we'll, we'll discuss later when we talk the budget piece a little bit. Right now, is that 2.3%. We should all be pretty pleased about that. Okay? But 2.3% leaves you with what? Leaves you with 0.7 in your growth gap. All right? So I don't want to get ahead of myself, so we'll come back to that point here. Turning the page to 1176, down at, you know, I already mentioned the $1,600 tax credit for primary residents. This is applied last. So if you're eligible for homestead credit or disabled veterans credit or those types, those things go in first. And you can never get money back. If you've got $319 left on your bill, that's all you're getting back. They don't get an extra $181 given back to you because of all the things that you're eligible for. Turning the page, more on 1176. There again is the 3% growth, uh, growth in dollars levy. And I'll tell you exactly what that is when we start talking about the budget. Political subdivisions can carry over unused percentages one time within any five-year period. So if you went to 2% in one year, you could go 4 in another, but you can only do that one time. So presumably, that would always be in the last year of it because you wouldn't want to miss something along the way. So turning the page, they did get rid of preliminary tax statements, which we all went, huh. And then they said, but you'll still be doing, well, and you got rid of nothing. You just changed it, is what you did. You got to provide the budget hearing notices, which were part of the preliminary tax statement before. Now those things are going to have to include the amount of property tax levy as a result of mills levy by a school district, which is normal. Identified PRC provided to the taxpayer, that would have been normal. Specify the PRC is, you know, coming from the legacy fund. That's just your way of you having to do this so the legislators can pat themselves on the back. They're going to do an interim study on this, but here's my objection to this. And when you make all these changes and you think they're fairly innocuous, but every single time they make a change, it's something that appears in the tax statement. Everybody has to comply with that. Complying with that costs a lot of money. Okay? So what are we chewing up here? You're chewing up your 3% to pay for a mandate that's coming from the state of North Dakota. Okay? That's bothersome. And those are things that are not even considered. You know, they, they want all this stuff and they do all this stuff and they have no consideration for the folks who actually have to put that in play. And our cost to do that is the exact same as Burley County's cost to do that. They have significantly more resources to pay for that cost as opposed to whether it's Sheridan County or Wells County or what have you. Turning the page, and this is an important one, whether it's school, district, cities, whatever the case may be. House Bill 1482, if you're going to do anything with a bond election, it has, there is no such thing as a special election anymore for a bond issue. Has to be on either your primary or your general election.
A special election?
No. No more special. Not, not for anything that deals with money. So, and the thought process is the right one, that you want as many people to vote on these things as possible. So I, I agree with that part. But if you lose on a bond issue in November of 2026, as soon as you can bring that up is June of 2028.
Right. Not six months later.
Not 90 years later. Okay, we can skip forward to the next page to the transportation budget. Senate Bill 2012, gas tax, which had life until near the end of the session, died a slow death at the end, which I guess we probably shouldn't be surprised. That made me mad.
Oh, I know. We've been talking about this.
No, the whole process.
Yeah.
Because they eliminated the three because they were going to add it on somewhere else. Then some doofus, two days before it was all over, it went from three to five, which was almost a ploy to try to get it killed because three was barely passing.
That threw up.
Yeah, I don't get it. No.
I don't understand that part of it either. Because it ain't, what is it? What's 21 years, it ain't been done with it, I think. Okay.
And more money is going to go into flex funding, which you can say that's good news. I look at it more like it's not necessarily good news. It's grant funding, which, okay, that's fine and dandy, but only if you can control who's on the other end of that grant making the approvals. To me, this is a sneaky way to get more money. The Cass County, Burley County, Williams County, St. John County, you name it. Because they'll, they'll have a slight advantage. Now, instead of giving direct payments to the counties, they're going to continue to do that at a lower level. Now, instead of giving direct payments to the counties, they're gonna continue to do that at a lower level.